Good evening and welcome to the Township of South Orange Village Planning Board Meeting for today, June 4th, 2015. Jetta, will you please read the roll?
Mr. Colton Max.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rosner.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Reverend Wilson.
Here.
And Mr. Allen.
Here.
Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2015 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record, and the Star Ledger in December 2014, and by filing said notice in the office of the Village Clerk. The first item on the agenda for today, actually just before we get started, I would like to welcome a Village President. First of all, congratulations on your recent election victory, and welcome now, even though you've been coming as an alternate over the past few months, I'd like to welcome you as a fully fledged, a full-fledged member of the Planning Board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just for a minute, President Cullen has assumed her position now as the Class 1 member of the Board. She had previously served-
No, now it's off.
Now it's off.
She had previously served in that capacity as a designated agent of the President. She's now acting as the Class 1 member, and she realizes, I'm sure, that the oath she took before is still in effect.
I do.
Thank you. And trustee Rosner and Mr. Lerner have been reappointed to their terms, but that was part of what happened at the most recent Board meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
After the organization.
So, welcome back.
Do they have to be re sworn in? You understand, your oaths are still in effect?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so moving ahead with the meeting agenda, the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held Monday, May 4th, 2015. People have read the minutes, and there are no suggested revisions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Reverend Wilson, got in by a hair, and a second from-
A second.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller.
And with that, I'm gonna... Is there anybody here who cannot vote on this? Actually, Danny, you probably can't vote either because you were not present for at least half the meeting, so you could.
Did you watch the video of the last meeting?
Okay. So, why don't you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Colton Max.
Yes.
Mr. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosner.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Wilson.
Yes.
And Mr. Allen.
Approval of resolutions, case number 231, Luther P. Turner Jr. and Hazel A. Turner, Block 704, Lot 1, 14 Kingman Road, minor subdivision. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot to create two lots with the intent to construct a one-family dwelling on the new lot. At our last meeting, this resolution was introduced, seconded, and then voted down. A resolution, the formal resolution, has been brought to the Board for a vote. If no one has any suggested revisions, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
This was Hazel.
Okay, I have a motion from Danny, from Mr. Allen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a second from Mr. Miller. Jetta, you wanna call the roll?
Mr. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Colton-
I'm sorry, just before you do that, is a vote in the affirmative means a vote against the application, correct?
Means the vote in favor of the resolution is drafted.
And the resolution is drafted is to vote down the-
Correct.
So if you vote yes for the resolution, you're voting against the application?
Right.
Okay, just to clarify. Thank you. Sorry, Jetta, please continue.
Okay. I'll start over, Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Colton Max.
Yes.
Mr. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
And Mr. Rosner.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, I need to recuse myself for case number 240, so I'm gonna give the gavel over to Mr. Miller, and I will exit the stage.
Stage left or stage right? We now have a resolution for the approval of South Mountain Beneath Jewish Center Senior Housing, that's the generator that was going to be on the side. Do I...again, a yes for the resolution does pass this one. And I believe, not able to vote unless they've watched the...well, I'm not so sure they're able to vote at all, because they were absent when we passed this. And I think absent was Allen, Harris, Adam, and Rev. What? Oh, you have that. You were here?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on the resolution? Do I hear a motion for, in favor of it?
Motion to-
Second?
Second.
Did you call the roll?
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Rosner.
Yes.
And Mr. Lerner.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, application to be heard, case number 239, AHS Physicians' Practice, Block 1909, Lot 8, 7 Vos Avenue, minor site plan. Applicant is seeking to change the use of parking from retail to medical. Welcome back, Council.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the Planning Board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Mr. Casey, this is Mr. Wellesley, and just to outline what we've done in one first day for the record, that we've given upon ourselves to renotice and republish the note, the 14 feet, because our public notice requires additional variance, which is listed, we've done, we're not to have issues, because they were basically a common application, and they were subject to the situation, it's supposed to be a term of law, and we're, we're going to republish the result. This application is for AHS Physicians' Practice, which is applied to this Board for variance, that an immense site plan approval, for the application of MetroCard's Physicians' Practice on Unit 8, 2001, 2002, and any facility in the state of Vos Avenue, retail, in the 82,000, and the existing vacant space in 7 Vos, and local, so, and the, and the, the dollar. The applicants shall seek to adjust to the right of the stage, the, 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 the block, the block address, the, 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 the parking spaces, the 10 physician states as well, we can't wait, only space, the, 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 the,
Because there were certain targeted and certain different categories of uses. And...
I think if you look at paragraph five of that resolution, the last sentence of paragraph five.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to find a copy of the resolution.
And we did break that down and summarize that in our memo, so...
Do you have it too, Susan, in your memo?
Yeah, it's in the memo under the, it's the May 4th memo on the second page, having to do with the application history, and it, and it does summarize.
Well, I think I actually read this at the last meeting, but certainly I'll go through it again. According to your application history, in 2003, excuse me, it was originally approved for a ShopRite building and approximately 5,000 square feet of retail on Vos Avenue and 96 residential units, 233 parking spaces. The approval was amended in 2004. The number of residential units was reduced to 80, and the amount of parking was reduced to 2,000, 205, with 111 being dedicated for residential use. The approval was further amended in 2006, increasing the residential units to 86, and again, 111 parking spaces in the lower level, which, if you look at our plan, exists today, it's gated off, so you can't go down to the lower level unless you are a resident of the, of the complex. And 94 parking spaces above, with 64 being dedicated for the supermarket, which, if you go out there, it's signed that it's, it's dedicated for that use. 12 shared by the residential and retail, and eight...
Which is the space where 12...
Correct. And 18 parking spaces open to the public with a two-hour limit. In 2008...
Oh, okay, that's where I was really focused and where I would ask that you respond, and maybe what you're doing is asking for an amendment to that. If it's going to be, this seems to indicate that the 12 spaces will be shared by residential and retail. If it's targeted or allocated for medical, the, the resolution of approval seems to indicate that it's for both residential and medical. So, I'm just asking how that comports, and can you comment on that?
I think the, based on everything that I have read, including cross easements, I think the best thing to do, if this board is willing to approve this use, the first thing we need to do is get a sign maker. Because I think at that point, I think the signage needs to be corrected that's, that's physically onsite. Because there is another sign, and I know the chairman mentioned this, I think the chairman mentioned it, maybe one of the other board members, there's actually an exclusive space for management.
I mentioned...
Which I don't think was ever approved. Maybe it was...
It was not approved, correct.
No, no, I said, I don't think it was approved, but if you physically go to the site, the sign exists. So I think, at a minimum, in order to stop all of the confusion, you needed, obviously, new signs to actually show what was actually approved by this, by this board.
And we would agree to that, if we did.
Right. As far as whether it's shared by, by residential and the spaces, I think if, if the, if the creation of, of over 4,000 square feet, obviously, you're going to need parking spaces. And I think 12 parking spaces should be dedicated to that use. And if it's for residences, you know, people that are there, I would think they're going to be in the bottom in the, in the secured parking. I, maybe guests would go there, but again, they could probably use the public spaces also. So I think it would be better served for the building if it was signed properly, and the 12 would actually be dedicated to the use of the retail that exists.
Which they had to be. They had to be. But when, when they were approved as retail in the front, there, there's no dedicated parking spaces there, so that only makes sense. Doesn't it, Mr. Casse?
No.
Well, again, I don't know what the, what the mindset was of the board or the governing body at that point, but I think on a practical basis, if you, if the creation of over 4,000 square feet of space, certainly, you're going to need some parking to go to, towards that use. And again, now that you have a permitted use as a doctor's office and a wellness center to the, to the right, there's no question that you need, you would need parking. You're going to have employees, you're going to have doctors there. So I think that the best scenario would be, we sign everything, 64 spaces to the supermarket as the board approved it.
No way.
18 public spaces with a two-hour limit as the board approved it. 12 spaces dedicated to those two uses and those two spots. And I think the breakdown should be, as we said, based on my interviews with the doctors, I think that's a realistic number. And again, they're certainly willing and able to purchase additional permits from the parking authority in the event that they have employees that need to, to use additional spots. But I think that, that is a realistic thing, but I think absolutely, I don't know who polices it, but the signage should be cleaned up in that building, so everybody knows what's going on.
The management will do it. The management will undertake it.
Well, I'm saying, as far as who would, who would make sure it's done, the enforcement act, obviously, this board doesn't have the power of enforcement.
No, but we would make sure that if it's part of the resolution, it would be part of, of, of the, of the site.
Are the 10 spaces that you want to purchase, are they in any particular lot?
From my understanding, when I, I just pulled...
I might purchase them here.
I met with, is it Neva, she, and Sam. She handed me the, the brochure when you walk in, they hand you a brochure. I believe it's just, you, you purchased the permits, and they just tell you the lots that permits can, you can park in.
It's the library lot, which is across the street.
Okay. Yeah. And she said there was space available, Mr. Casse?
Yes, I asked her that specifically.
And, I'm sorry, if you're gonna, if you're gonna talk about purchasing permits, because that's going to be important as far as I'm concerned, who is purchasing the permits? I mean, I, I'm...
The tenant, on an annual basis.
The tenant is going to purchase.
Yeah.
And, and there is a representative from the tenant who's speaking later.
Mr. Rosellini, yes.
Who can verify, because...
Yes.
By my count, right, let's just assume we take everything, and Susan, I apologize, you want to go ahead in a moment, I just want to follow up on the math here. There are, according, by ordinance, there are 15 spaces required for Seven Vos Avenue, given that there are three professionals, and doctors or paraprofessionals. And there are eight being provided, which means a deficit of seven by that calculation.
Correct.
And for 11 Vos Avenue, there is, you know, the assumption is, it's not, it's, it's going to be, I think it's in a wellness center, but not a doctor's office. We're not going to go through that calculation, so based on the calculation, just based on the square footage, there would be seven spaces required for which there would be four set aside, which leaves a deficit of three. So by my count, there's a deficit, assuming, just taking your plan at face value and not questioning it or saying if it's right or wrong, that means there's a deficit of 10.
Correct.
By my count. So, I will tell you that my inclination, assuming nothing else in this conversation, is to ask the tenant whether or not they plan to purchase 10 such permits, because that eliminates the deficit. That's, that's where I'm coming from, at least. I, I'm not speaking for my fellow board members who may feel otherwise, but, but I'm glad to hear, if, if the applicant is here and can address that specifically, that question, I'm giving him fair warning, is coming down the pipe for me, at least.
The applicant will consider your issues.
Okay.
But what we're going to, what we've discussed with the applicant was to have all the employees parked at the lot, and have, you know, because practically speaking, how do you control clients, patients, when they come to the wellness center? He's going to explain to you how limited the wellness use is, and you'll hear testimony on that issue.
So there's, there's three employees in the doctor's office, and one...
Maximum of two. One or two.
In the wellness.
Yeah. And the three, it's a maximum, Mr. Casse, is that correct?
Correct.
Let, let Mr. Rosellini testify.
So what you're really saying is, those five people, maximum of five people would be bought, would be getting permits to park in the lot across the street?
We don't believe there'll be five at any time, but four.
What?
We calculated three to four, but let Mr. Rosellini testify.
Whatever it is.
Whatever the number is.
Because you can't, you can't really do permits for, for people who come in, patients come to the doctor, because once they park, they're not going in to get a permit and going back out and putting it on the car. So, so if they bought the permits for the employees, or we required them to buy the permits for the employees, they still have a deficit of six, which we, which is what the variance would be for.
Right.
By my calculation. And, and, you know, we don't have a parking study here to, to, to see whether the, whether spaces are available or not. I, I never had a problem finding a space. I know Michael said he has, but I've never knocked down a space in that parking lot. But I, but realistically speaking, they need a variance for six, because a patient's not going to come in there and go in and out with the permit, so.
Okay. Susan, did you wish to continue?
Just one other thing. I believe that you would probably also, what you're requesting is an amendment to your, to your approval, because at that point, it was dedicated, those 12 spaces were supposed to be, technically, they were supposed to be shared.
That's correct.
The retail with the residential, those 12 spaces. So, I believe the applicant is asking for also...
I think he said at the last meeting, the residents have never used that space.
I, I understand the merits and the testimony. What I'm saying is, I believe that that would be part of what you're requesting.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
I think what you need to do, and again, based on what I've read, spoken to you, spoken to Sal, I think it needs to get cleaned up. And I think that the actual signage out there has to represent what the board approved. And I think that would be the best thing in, in everybody's best interest. So there's no confusion, when you go onsite, in the event that, that someone else purchases this site down, down the line, everybody knows what, what is really going on there.
And it has to practically speak, that the vacancy in the building has created the parking situation that has, because those spaces have not been used since its inception. The space has been vacant. So that creates an issue. We'll clarify that.
No, they haven't.
Okay. You're done, Susan?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, there was also a, a question of how many employees are going to be in here, how many doctors, how many techs?
Yes.
And so forth. But just staying on, on the parking, I've been in that garage many times since your application, and come around 11, 12 o'clock in the afternoon, those spaces, all but maybe two are taken, and the one that's not taken is one of the two that are reserved for the leasing people at, at the apartments. As, as far as the signage being misleading, that's up to the town people to enforce. There is approvals on, in hand, and if the signage is wrong, then somebody from the town should say it's wrong and enforce it. That's not for us to enforce. But when this was originally approved, all of this parking that wasn't reserved was going to be used in common for the tenants, the retail tenants that were going to be in here. There wasn't a discussion of reserved parking. It was all supposed to be used in common. And, and now you're coming and you're asking us to literally change that, where parking is dear in the town to begin with, and reserve all of these spaces. Does that sum that up, that you're looking for these all to be reserved?
Mr. Miller, with all due respect...
But just answer the question, does, is this...
Yes. My, the plan speaks for itself, but with all due respect, the way, again, I interpreted the approval, those spaces were reserved. That's how it was approved.
What occurred afterwards, due to the vacancy, to the signage, we're trying to clean that up.
Look, we were also under the impression, when the zoning change was made, that it was going to be, all of this is going to be medical, and it's not, so...
Which, which law is that?
At least, that was my understanding, I'll speak for myself.
Well, again, I, if I can?
Yeah.
Based on the testimony at the last meeting, when Dr. Schneider got up and said, "No, no, I'm taking the space to the left," because I too, I was under the impression the entire, the entire space was going to be dedicated to that use. So what we did, after I interviewed the doctors, now you have the space to the left and the space to the right. And again, from my understanding, it's all being leased by the same entity, Atlantic Health. But as far as what's going on there, even though it's, it's the same people, what I, what I should...
And Mr. Rosellini will clarify that. Mr. Rosellini's here, will actually give you diagrams of what's going to be used in the wellness area.
So, so wait a minute, you're saying now, space number seven and space 11 is going to be in, in your medical use?
No.
Space number, no.
It's the same, AHS is the, is the tenant. The use is going to be different. They're two separate spaces.
Well, what is, okay, what is the use, for seven, I understand, what is the use now for 11?
Mr. Rosellini will explain that. Integrated medical space, wellness space. That's why we brought him here tonight, to clarify this.
But, Mr. Miller, from my understanding, they came before this board when they seek a change in the redevelopment plan.
And they explained that.
Maybe you weren't on the board, but it's, that explanation is the same tonight, it hasn't changed.
Okay. I, I rest. Okay. Other questions from members of the board? I, I do have another question. I'm, I'm reading through the history that was included in the, in the planner's memo dated May 4th. We, we stopped in our discussion earlier at the third bullet point, which talked about the approval being further amended in 2006, which talks about the final number of spaces that were included and how they were to be allocated. But I'm wondering if I can get your opinion about, if, if your opinion is at all changed or what have you by the next bullet point? Because it says, "In 2008, the applicant was granted an additional parking variance by changing the use of the second floor to the, of the market to a restaurant, which increased the parking requirement by 48 spaces." So, I, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, you know, at the time, there was a variance granted, and that was based upon a certain use, and now that, the, the use intensified, no additional spaces were added. And now, we're coming, now we're back again, and there's a new tenant who looks like it's going to be perhaps, you know, intensifying the use yet again, and that's why we're having a discussion about a variance. So I'm wondering whether or not, how, how you, if you could say a little bit about that, please.
Sure. The, Mr. Chairman, again, the building is the building. The space that was created, was created, obviously. It's been vacant, again, since my client took ownership of the building. But again, there is no place to add parking spaces. So, when this board deliberated and looked at changing that use for those two spaces, there was always a requirement for, for parking in those two spaces, once you created the square footage, regardless of, of what that could be. But I think when the board deliberated and the, and the governing body ultimately approved it, they had to take into account what it was. It, it's not a vacuum. And I think, once you add up, certainly, this should have been discussed when you deliberated on that point by changing the use to the medical office. And again, this isn't sleight of hand. That's why we came back, I tried to do some homework, based on the last meeting, because a lot of the stuff that was, was given to us, I didn't have. There is a deficit. However, the question is, does the, does the restaurant peak at the same moment in time when the doctor's office does? The answer is, is no. Obviously, those two uses aren't going to coincide at the, at the peak of the operation, and when that peaks, I'm sure the, the market isn't peaking. So you're doing more of a shared parking analysis in the area, and then certain other uses around it don't peak. So there's always, even though you don't have all of the spaces that are required by ordinance, you have enough of them, because not everything happens at the same moment in time. So, that's, that's the...
How, please? You know, one, one of the issues which was brought up before, I think by Michael, is that the enforcement of the spaces there. And I remember going back with the, the approval for the restaurant, I think it was, about the importance of enforcing those spaces. So if there's 64 spaces dedicated to the supermarket and above, and there's spillover, then if it's enforced. But it was also testified at the original planning board meeting, when the thing was approved for the supermarket, that all the employees of the market, and then later it was about the, the employees of above, but all the employees of the market would not park in those 64 spaces, which I think part of the issue leading to the parking problem, and leading to why there's a count and why there's trouble parking, is that since the change in ownership of the supermarket, that's longer, no longer been enforced by the current owner, that he allows employees to park in, in those spaces. So I think if you really want a variance, you're going to have to figure out a way to enforce those spaces, the 64 spaces and the 18 and the 12, that they're really enforced, and, and I don't want you asking the town to do it, we want you to do it, as part of your thing, and that's just putting a sign there. You're going to have to have someone from the building go there and make sure somehow. But you're never going to be able to meet your parking requirements and allow people to park there that are not supposed to park there, whether it's commuters during the daytime, whether it's people from other buildings, or employees of the supermarket.
Yeah, and I'm just going to make one other sort of comment, which is, that, you know, you look at the history here, goes back to 2003, there have been changes back and forth, but the, the changes appear to be an intensification of the need for parking over time. And, you know, you, you sort of have said to us, to a certain extent, it is what it is, meaning you can't create more parking out of thin air, which is true, but you use the term sleight of hand, I, I would, you know, and I, if I were to use a, a less, a slightly less nice term, I might say bait and switch, meaning that you ask for certain things, not you, but...
Obviously.
That, that, you know, and, and there are different people involved, we're different, whatever, but there was a point in time at which there was a request made, and, and it was evaluated on that basis, and sort of what's happened is, over time, it's like, well, we need this, we need this, we need this, and each time, it's an intensification of the use, and what it does is, it sort of makes us feel silly, as a planning board, having approved something, and then later to, you know, keep coming back, and then told, well, you know, we, we need this, we have to have this, this was intended, I mean, it's sort of, it's really, it's really difficult from that perspective, and it makes it, it makes it difficult for us to be in, you know, when we're looking at applications, how are we supposed to look, I'm making a general point, how are we supposed to look at applications for an applicant if we think that the applicant's going to come back later and say, "Well, you know, I know we asked for this," and I, I get it, if it happens once, but if it happens, you know, you know, fool me once, fool me twice, this is more than a few times. I'm not suggesting bad faith, I'm just suggesting, this is what's happening, we're coming back and back, and there's, you know, more intensification.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I can say is, my client took ownership in, in 2012, not, not 2003, 2006, 2008. But I think if anything, the board should applaud themselves. You have a vibrant downtown, around, around the, the rail station. If anything, you're a model in New Jersey. This is what communities want to accomplish, and you have accomplished it. And I don't think this is the, the straw that, that'll break the camel. Again, you have vacant space, and it doesn't look like vacant space, because obviously it's separated by a lobby and there's activity there, but in reality, it's vacant space. And I don't think that's what you want in a downtown. And again, this will bring, whether it's sick people or not, whether it is a wellness center, it will bring more economic life and vitality. And that, Mr. Chairman, is what you're, what I think you're trying to accomplish here, and this will provide more of a goal towards that, that reality.
Okay. Any other, I'm sorry?
Just, the retail space, when it was there before, and there were 12 spaces set aside for that, that was for any retail, right? That was for...
Yes.
That was what it was before, 12, 12 spaces set up.
Okay.
It was 12 for residential and retail.
Right. And, and by the way, I should add, that if, if, if we were just looking at this as a retail use, you wouldn't need a variance for Seven Vos Avenue.
Correct.
Seven Vos Avenue, you would need seven spaces and eight are required. The only reason you need a variance, based on what you've brought forth, is because it's a, it's a use. And I, I will tell you, having been on the board at the time, that the change to the zoning was, which was relatively recent, was done most recently, I can tell you that that was not something that I was thinking about, contemplating, had in mind at all. So, I mean, I can't speak to what's, the planning board was thinking in 2003 or 2006, but I can certainly speak to what I was thinking in 2014, and I can tell you that that was not on my mind, I won't speak for anyone else. So, I would have a difference of opinion about that, certainly.
Okay.
But having said that, any other questions from members of the, of the board?
I, I just want to follow up. I mean, I just want to clear in my own mind, you're telling me your client is leasing both seven and 11?
Correct.
Okay? And seven is going to be offices, and 11 is going to be a wellness center, undefined?
You're going to hear about it today. Mr. Rosellini?
Sure.
He's going to give you pictures and diagrams. Please be patient, sir.
Because last week, oh, excuse me, last month, when we heard this, there was no, no mention that this was leased by the client, it was only going to be number seven, and this was, you didn't know what the use was going to be. So please, just get your act together.
We're here tonight to do that, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the members of the board? Okay, any questions from members of the public for this witness? Okay, hearing none. Thanks, Chairman, much.
Thank you for your...
Thank you for your indulgence, thank you for your patience as well, everyone.
Sure. You can call up your next...
Mr. John Rosellini?
Want to mark that, what was behind you?
Yeah, I guess we can, right?
Yeah.
That's a... Is that a colorized version of what was submitted in May?
Yes, but you know what, we labeled it as sheet, one of one, so it's a separate drawing, so I guess for, again, it's a large...
Please speak into the microphone, sorry.
Sorry.
Is that their first exhibit?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, A1, please. There were no exhibits last time?
Thank you. Mr. John Rosellini?
Please raise your right hand.
I was just saying, Dr. Ed.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you will give to this board is the whole truth?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name.
John Rosellini.
And spell your last name.
Mr. Rosellini, can you please tell us your position and experience for the record?
Director of Business Development and Physician Relations with Overlook Medical Center, Atlantic Health System.
And you have experience in, in this particular realm, opening up physician practice centers? Is that one of your specialties?
That's one of my jobs, yes, sir.
Okay. And how long have you been doing this?
Too long, no, six years.
Okay. And where is Overlook located?
Overlook Medical Center is one of the hospitals of Atlantic Health System, located in Summit, New Jersey.
And is this model, a new model, or you have, you created this model in other towns, other, other areas?
We've done this model in other communities.
Approximately how many?
I believe we have three right now, and we're under discussions, leasing space in Fenwood, and this one, we're hoping to open as well.
Were you involved in the redevelopment ordinance and process before, in the Village of South Orange?
Yes.
Can you please explain what that process incurred?
I think some of you have seen me for a couple of years now. We've made presentations in front of the Economic Development Committee, Planning Board, the Business Alliance, the Downtown Business Group, number of different places, to the Village Trustees, I think even as well. I think we invited everybody down to see our, what we call Overlook Downtown, which is the downtown storefront located in Summit, New Jersey, on Springfield Avenue, and we've presented that at a number of the committees and boards that we've been in front of as well.
To clarify some of the board's concerns and, and issues with respect to the two spaces, can you please explain what are the difference between the two spaces?
Okay, so, one of the unique things about this building is it's two separate spaces. If this was 3,000 square feet all in one space, it'd be, you know, a much easier process. The one space that I believe Mr. Miller was referring to was the 11 Vos Avenue side. That will be utilized very similar to what our Overlook Downtown in Summit is, okay? And, and you need to think of the whole concept, both spaces as health and wellness in South Orange, okay?
So we're going to hand this out?
We, I brought actually with me, and they could be handed out, copies of pictures of what our Summit site looks like, and what we had presented to the, some of the other boards, so you can see what the storefront actually looks like on, on Springfield Avenue and Summit. The Seven Vos Avenue side is the side that's set up for family medicine, okay? And that's anything from pediatrics through geriatrics. And that's, again, medicine is changing as well, and the presentations we made to the other boards, we explained how medical is now becoming part of downtown business districts and shopping malls as well, again, because with the rise of the internet, over the last 10 years, we are a component of downtown and near train stations for people's convenience, as well as for generating walkable traffic in your livable downtown transit zones.
So, what is that, what exactly is a health and wellness center? So, what is that, what exactly is a health and wellness center? What kind of-
So, the health and wellness center, the 11 Vos Avenue side consists of, and you can see it on the storefront that we show downtown in Summit as well, that could be some counseling for metabolic, someone coming in there that's had bariatric surgery, that's coming for, to talk to people about diet, and anything to do with weight loss, proper eating, nutrition, sports nutrition for youth, it could be a little acupuncture, it could be, it's all retail-type-
Massage.
Massage.
Is it individual appointments, or is it just walk-in?
It's individual appointments, so the site in Summit does massage, it does some counseling, it does health and wellness. It goes out into the community, it'll go to your schools, it's a source and a resource for your community, it'll go to your organizations and make presentations, so it's an all-around healthy living tips. But, again, it's massage, meditation, things like that, spa-type, what you would consider a spa.
Is this medical or retail use?
That is considered retail use, sir.
I'm sorry, what?
The 11 Vos Avenue side is actually considered retail use in every town we're in.
And pardon me, my voice is straining, I've been passing a flu all week, I'm on thermoflu-
It'd be similar to a spa.
Pardon me. How many employees will, will this wellness center have?
A maximum of two on that site.
At any one time?
Yes, it can-
And they will each have a patient to deal with?
One can be answering the phones, one would be with a patient, yes.
So, how many clients are expected during the peak periods of operations?
On the retail site?
Yeah.
Two to three at the most.
Are you willing to purchase annual spaces for the employees of this space as well?
Sure, we would be willing to.
And of the shared space, shared 12 spaces, you'll be using four spaces, as Mr. Costa indicated, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you believe those four spaces will be adequate for this particular use?
Yes.
For the clients that you, that you spoke of?
Yes.
More than adequate, right? Two people at max, two to three people at max?
We've had no problems in downtown Summit and the other towns we're in.
Okay. But they're, they're made by specific appointment, like you don't get walk-in business, people come in and say, I want a spa?
People walking down the street might walk in and ask for a brochure or something, but no, it's not a walk-in center.
Made by appointment only, thank you. Now, just to clarify, the medical space, because there were some issues, and we'd like to clarify that.
Yes.
The board has some issues. Would you please tell me the names of the physicians that may be available- at the medical site, which is the 7 Vos Avenue side?
So, on the family medicine side, this is a satellite office of what we call Summit Springfield Family Practice. Two of those physicians live in the area, and they would be the two that would be here at that location.
And would they alternate in the beginning?
Yes, absolutely.
So, they wouldn't both be here at the same time?
No, sir.
And that would be Dr. Snyder and Dr. Posner?
Dr. Snyder and Dr. Dubek, who lives in Maplewood, yes.
Okay, thank you. And how many employees, additional employees will they have with them?
They would have one additional employee with them.
Okay. Each physician?
Yes.
And how many patients would they see at peak hours?
Okay, so, our practices are controlled by the size of the offices, okay, and if you, if you look at a 2,000 square foot office-
We have given a model or a diagram.
We, I think we provided you with a sketch of what the proposed layout would be similar to. At peak time, there could be two patients in, and possibly one to two in the waiting room at the maximum. This office can't handle more than that.
And the reason you have all those different, you have six offices, is because one gets clean, one patient sees somebody, is that, is that what it is?
So, if you look at the sketch in front of you, it shows six examination rooms, okay, so, you're looking at an architectural sketch, one of those examination rooms actually may become a physician's office with a desk in it, it's just we make them all the same exact size, so when they're constructed. If all six were operating as examination rooms, at the most, at any given point in time, we could probably have three patients back there. It's just a matter of setting up the room for the next person coming, was that room clean when the last person left, with infections, with all regulations that we're under these days? We can't run six rooms, six people at all times, it just doesn't work, it's an impossibility. So, the square footage here, and the number of rooms, size of the waiting area, it's going to dictate the, the volume, absolutely.
Will you be doing any lab work or medical procedures here?
No, we don't have the space, we are not, this is not set up with a laboratory where people will just come in to have their blood drawn, you're coming here for a physician consult.
What are the benefits, in your opinion, to the neighborhood and community of this type of practice?
So, one of the things we presented to some of the boards when we were here, was the population of South Orange, the number of providers actually located in South Orange at the current point in time, and what the needs are, according to the government, per thousand of population. So, I believe at the present time, there's four family practice physicians located inside of South Orange proper itself. South Orange has a tendency to drive outside of town, and we've had all of these discussions, and this is a way of capture the residents here, capture them using your pharmacies, your diners, your food, your bagel shop, whatever, while they're here, rather than driving up to West Orange, or down to Milburn, or to Summit, to see a physician and stopping at the Walgreens, or CVS, or something else, and the Dunkin' Donuts, that's not located in South Orange. So, yes, when we look at the demographics of the populations in the community, and the number of physicians here, it's a desirable community and desirable location.
So, just to clarify, you said that the South Orange does not have sufficient family practices to satisfy the deeds and population?
If you look at the population of South Orange, the number of citizens, and we had looked at it, the statistics were a few years back, and the number of family physicians that are located in the community, I believe we have four for, I'm going off the top of my head, I have to dig into the presentation, and I want to say, it was 16,000? 16,198 residents in town, 5,516 households, and 3,756 families reside in the Village of South Orange, as of the data, we got, and there were four primary care physicians located in South Orange. So, this is definitely a benefit to the community, and we believe that through the entire process here of the two locations, offering the alternative services, as well as, you know, they're complementary to each other, we're really bringing a good, a great service and a great system to South Orange.
Just to clarify, another issue of concern of the board, are people able to walk in? Is this going to be a clinic?
No, this is, this is not a clinic, you know, this is not a, at all, this is a appointment-based practice, however, there are, we always leave in our book, same-day appointments, okay? We also are the physicians for the Student Center, down the street on South Orange Avenue at Seton Hall University, so we are in the community, Dr. Snyder was actually there some days as well, so we are already here.
Are you also willing to purchase spots, and could you explain to the town, on an annual basis, for the number of employees that will be present at that location?
Yeah, when our planner had come to the town this last visit, it was suggested, talking to the Parking Authority, and we'd be willing to purchase, actually for both sides, permits for the employees. We can't buy permits for the customers, you know, it'd be like, if someone wanted to go to bagels, how do you get, or buy bagels, how do you give them a permit to go park? You understand, I'm, I'm from Morris County, sorry.
How many employees would you have, at any maximum, at this particular location? Physicians and paraprofessional?
There'd be four maximum in that site at any point in time, and that'd be tight.
Okay. And right now, you envision two to start?
Yes.
Okay. And we've already heard Mr. Costa's testimony, that's correct, you would use the eight spaces for the, for the patients, potential patients?
Yes.
Would you have a vision, eight patients attending, or being at the site, at any one time?
Not on the medical side, no.
Okay. And you also have handicap sites, that are not being calculated in this calculation, is that correct? Some of the older patients who are handicapped, would have the right to park in the spaces?
In the handicap spaces.
The handicap spaces, which are not being designated and calculated. Okay. I have no further questions of this witness, of course, if the board has questions or the public?
I'll start by asking our professional, our planner, if she has any questions.
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. Members of the board?
Yeah, I'm, let me just deal with the wellness center for the moment, even though that's really not before us, but you brought it up. You're going to have classes for yoga, yoga, Pilates, meditation, and so forth?
That's what occurs at our Summit location, there's a large room in the back of the Summit location, it's a little bit bigger, anything that would happen here would be more of a one-on-one, because there is not the space, while, while space 11, the retail use, is shown as 2,000 square feet, actually, 800 square feet of that is a loft, up steps, that's not handicapped accessible, so that would not be used for services, be stored.
So, you're not really going to have classes, per se, of them one-on-one?
Right. What we were showing you is what we existently have, yes, sir, what we existently, what we currently have in Summit is what I was showing you.
And how big is your facility in Summit?
Our facility in Summit is probably about 5,000 square feet, it's two floors.
Okay, going back to the doctors' offices, you said that you're not going to be drawing blood here, so if a patient comes in and needs to have a blood test, you're not going to be drawing-
No, 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 what I, what I, okay, I'll be, I'll clarify.
Sure, please.
So, the physician will draw blood from the patient in the exam room, absolutely, okay? But there are places like LabCorp, Quest, Everest Labs, where you can just drive up-
So, the physician, not a physician's tech, is going to draw blood?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Other questions from members of the board?
I have a couple.
Please.
I can't throw on this.
No, it's fine.
So, I do empathize with the applicant, because as the only person from both the boards that voted against the redevelopment plan, this was the issue that I fully anticipated, was the parking. So, with that said, I thought the changes in the redevelopment plan recognized medical wellness, grouped them all together under wellness, and the standard was lowered as well, is that correct? For parking?
I don't think so.
It was grouped together, but I don't recall that it was lowered. I, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I just don't recall.
So, after this new definition of wellness center standards was created, this was after the discussion about Medtail, which I still find a little humorous, it reads wellness center standards, it shall have a parking standard, standard of four spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. Now, I haven't done the math, I'll admit, I'm not prepared, but I, based on some of the things that Mr. Miller noted, it seemed like those requirements that your professionals testified to seemed high, if we're using that standard.
Right, and I think a lot of confusion, and I'll go back to Mr. Miller, I'm just, I'm being honest, okay, is what we call a paraprofessional-
I hope so.
Or, no, I apologize, as a former mayor and a planning board member for 15 years, believe me, you know, the definition of what you call paraprofessional, and what they do, and what we call a technician, and what they do, you know, in the old days, it was a doctor and a nurse, okay? Now, you watch the TV, you go to the Burdane Institute for six months, and you come out with a certificate, you're a medical technologist or a medical assistant, okay? There's no longer Mary answering the phone at the front desk and, you know, taking an appointment, and then somebody, you know, the nurse with her cap, things have changed, evolved, so the terminology's a little fuzzy, and when you say paraprofessional, okay, that's when you get into a whole gray area, so we're, we're saying to you, two doctors and a paraprofessional, but that's not seeing patients, they can't write scripts, they can't, okay, they can bring the patient into the room, they can get them set up, they can take a blood pressure, but they're not truly a doctor, that, it's not, it's not an NP, a nurse practitioner, or a physician assistant, okay, those are truly identical to a doctor, where they can write scripts, they can treat you, and, you know, that's what we would consider a provider, a doctor, on our side. If that gives you any clarification?
Do, let's just go through this, though, because I want to make sure we're, we're working off of our most recent documents, and perhaps the planner can chime in on this. So, are we treating both 7 and 11 as wellness centers?
No.
And?
No. Only seven.
I just heard tonight, the way that this is being divided out, so I was confused about how this was going too, so, I'm sorry, but I-
Okay.
It sounds like we, we heard that 7 is medical-
7 is medical.
And 11 is the wellness center, and which is not medical, and they're saying it falls under the definition of-
Retail.
Retail.
Right. That was confirmed by your engineer, and Mr. Zoning Officer, Mr. Costa had conversations with you.
Do you have a copy of the most recent Central Business District redevelopment plan? Is that what you've been working off of, the one that was adopted? Excuse me, and, at the end of 2013?
With room is the cost of back to-
Because I'm actually helping you out.
No, I understand where you're going to. We really appreciate your help.
This, this discussion, again, I'll note that I'm the one who's, who disagreed with it, but let's be fair, that redevelopment plan was crafted to accommodate what the board and the planning board felt was a good use, the argument of it being on the side street, this whole Medtail, Medtail presentation, so the majority, well, actually, in fact, everybody had agreed with that, and as a part of that, I thought medical was falling under the umbrella of wellness center. Wellness center now being a new definition in the Central Business District redevelopment plan, with new parking standards, that were less than what's required otherwise for medical retail.
So, when we came back in for building permit and all, okay, your zoning officer went to the medical office parking standards, and that's how we're here, for 7 Vos, because 11 is considered retail, before even you change your ordinance, 11 we could have come into.
But it's worth noting, by the way, that on your plan, that even the newest plan, A1, the parking analysis is specific for a medical office.
Correct, because that's what we were instructed to, by your zoning officer, to use that number.
That's what Sal recommended.
That's what Sal told us to use.
And I wouldn't be using that, I would be using the one that was agreed to in the redevelopment plan, which is, it shall have a parking standard of four spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, is that not correct?
We argued that last time, but Sal insisted that it had to be the five.
Yes.
This redevelopment plan was crafted for this use for Atlantic Health in this space.
We absolutely understand what you're saying, what you're doing, we're doing what we were instructed to do by your zoning officer.
I wish he was here right now, because this is why it's getting confusing, this was the amendment that was passed by all of us, and we're getting irritated by the applicant, who's coming back, who knew that there was going to be a parking variance, we all did, I mean, that's why I voted no, and they're here, and this was the parking standard that, that they would need to meet.
Sheena, this is the first time that I'm hearing that number 11 is under their lease.
I have to be fair, because I've heard that before, but I have to-
We've heard that for-
Not at the hearing.
No, I didn't say that.
Well, but I haven't heard it before at the public hearing.
But he had made that presentation to us before, that it was half medical office and half wellness center, and it's the-
We did, we submitted, I apologize, we did submit that when we did the testimony for the change of use for the application for the downtown business.
It's on our application, sir.
Oh, that's mine.
No, no, but, but I've been here for two years through a number of boards, we've had that from day one, we've said that, we've never said we didn't have both sites.
That was my understanding.
Thank you.
Well, just, just to be clear, I mean, the, just to make sure we're clear on this, the application, I'm looking at the application, says, subject property, street address, 7 Vos Avenue. There's no, there's no reference to 11 Vos Avenue, and furthermore, I mean, every other reference to, in your application, has been to 7 Vos Avenue.
So, Mr. Chairman, and all, candor, okay, we went into your zoning officer for use, 11 is a permitted use, he could just sign off on, didn't have to come to the board. That's why your application for the medical says only 7.
If 7 wasn't rented out, and they came in with 11, there'd be no variance, there'd be no reason for them to be here-
Absolutely.
Rented out as a wellness center.
Right, correct.
It's number 7 that creates the problem.
And where Sheena's going is saying, when we got the use changed in the CBD, CBD?
Yes.
Thank you, you know, they changed from downtown CBD, it became health and wellness, and medical is allowed as part of health and wellness, at a parking ratio that's different than what your zoning officer is requiring us to come in at.
Which is bringing us to the fact that they need the variance for 7 spaces, it's one and-
Okay, got to keep that off.
I know, I was trying to get to this, to the redevelopment plan, and I apologize for that.
Yeah, no, but can we just, would it be helpful, Mr. Chairman, if, if I am correct, if this is the standard, and we'll obviously have to talk to Sal, I'm not sure how it changes it, what, what, can you go over what the gross floor area is in number 7?
7 is two, yes, I have it exactly.
We have the exact measurements, on notice, we said 2,122 square feet, Unit A, and Unit B, with the integrated space, the wellness center is 2,062, so you would have 4,000-
It's Unit A.
180 square feet total, if you want to combine them.
I don't believe we can combine them, we have to treat them separately, but-
It's the 2,000 square feet with the physician offices, the reason we're here, the 2,100.
Okay, so, divided by 400, which would be 5.3 for 7, and it would be-
Eight.
Sorry, made a mistake, divided by, we don't want to make mistakes when talking about Sorry, made a mistake, divided by, we don't want to make mistakes when talking about parking, and 5.1 for the second, which gets us to roughly 10, well, 10 to 11.
You know, our initial letter of denial did not mention any variances, any parking variances, so that's why we didn't notice them. We worked off the letter of denial, it didn't mention any parking variances, it just said site plan approval.
Well, you have noticed now, Ford.
Oh, that's why we did it. We have, because we wanted to be extra careful to meet the board's concerns, and we are doing everything the board requested. We're excited to be part of your downtown. We are, if anybody's persistent, I would say, you've seen me for two and a half years, and we are, we are a part of your community, and we want to become a bigger part of your community, and-
The absence of our engineer doesn't require us, I'm thinking, to wait for engineer to get back so that we can have the discussion. Planning board has to move forward regardless. We are not required, and I'm just trying to talk through this, we're not required to accept the advice of, or the interpretation of the engineer if we are in disagreement with said interpretation. Having said that, I'm, I can't, I personally can't work talking around something which may or may not be the case, meaning I need, I need to know exactly what the standard is that was included in the central, you know, in the central business district that should be applied in this case to each of these spaces. So there is a medical office in number seven, there is a wellness center in number 11. What does that mean in there? It's 21, 22 square feet in space number seven, it's 2,062 square feet in space number 11. Those are fa, those are the facts, so taking those facts and applying the actual specific language of what it says in the central business district, I'm willing to work through that, I just want the exact language, and if I don't have it, and nobody can present it to me, I'm not acting on it.
But I'm not quite sure what the difference is, they're asking for a variance for ten spaces, based on the higher standard, so.
Fine, then that means that all the discussion that we just had with Sheena goes right out the window, so we're just forgetting about it.
They are, they're not-
You can actually take it under consideration, you have to sadly-
I can't take, I, I cannot take under consideration that which I don't know. So if, if I can't get, Sheena has raised a line of discussion, a line of argumentation which suggests, or suggested, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so if I'm misstating it, please tell me.
Go for it.
That, that because, that because of the change in the definition to the central business district, and as it applies to this property, that perhaps the applicant was misadvised and is applying a standard that does not need to be applied, and the need is less severe, is not as great, because the definition of the central business district means that the amount of parking required would be less. So what I'm specifically asking is, okay, I'm willing to buy the argument, tell me specifically what that is. Now, just to, let me finish, let me finish, then I'll promise I'll let you go ahead. If, if somebody can give me the definite, you know, the specific definition and application of central business, or how it applies here, I'm willing to go along for the ride, and I'm willing to listen to it. If nobody can give it to me, then we're back where we were before we started.
The planner's the one who drafted the document, why don't we just ask the planner to read the document and give her a opinion on it?
Before she answers, can I ask, you indicated in the wellness center that there was not 2,062 square feet of usable space because there was a lot. If that's the case, does that change any of the equations?
So I went back to our lease to make sure, or to see what we were leasing, and it is a lower rate than the other side, because the other side's all ground floor, they did a blended rate, and it's a little bit less of a rate. So we are technically leasing, if you look at our lease, the 2,100 square feet, but it's cheaper because there's a certain amount of it that's just storage.
I think it's something, Danny, Danny, I think it's something we can consider, but I don't think it changes the definition of what square footage is under the ordinance. I had the same, I had the same thought, so I-
Mr. Chair, I apologize, but your zoning officer interpreted that use as retail and wasn't, that wasn't the concern, which is why we're here for seven, not 11.
I understand.
And I would disagree with what trustee Rosner said, it's not 10 is 10, what I am suggesting is that based on the standards for the wellness center, what they need is 10, total, not a variance for 10.
I understand that, but that's-
I said under, under if they apply, they're asking for a variance for 10, but Susan wrote this, and she could fill her own take with this. It's back to you, Susan.
Or I could be totally wrong.
No, I-
And you can tell me that.
Our memo did not indicate that there was a variance. Our memo indicated that they need a modification, that what I was suggesting before, that they needed a modification to their site plan approval, because of the way that the site, the spaces were supposed to be allocated, okay? I, the one thing is, is that your engineer is your zoning officer, okay? So as a result of that, that's a little different than just having the engineer say something, as you well know, Sheena. So the zoning officer has interpreted the fact that there's a need for this. I guess that the board can, and Pat, I'm kind of-
The board is authorized to interpret an ordinance which is necessary to determine an application?
So the board can.
Yes.
Okay, so that's where-
However, the only application before us is for number seven, not 11. And so we've got to really rule on number seven. That's what's before us. We may know that they're doing something in number 11, but seven is what the application is about, not 11. And so we ought to focus our comments on seven.
So is the question that, worst case scenario, then, the parking standard for seven would be 15, if we use the definition in the ordinance, or it would be actually six?
Patrick, they're giving you a notice.
Or it would be six, because if you divide it by 400, and you get 5.3, it has to round up. So is that the question, whether or not the standard for that space is 15 spaces, or is it six spaces? That's, is that the-
That is, that is, go ahead, Patrick.
Parking demand for unit seven, which has 2,122 square feet, under the ordinance would be, what did I say?
Six.
15, because it's three professionals times five, and under the quoted redevelopment plan would be six, because it's 5.3, which has to be rounded up. So that's, well, it seems to be we're looking at, is it 15 or six?
And I would also ask that, it is my understanding that the central business district redevelopment plan supersedes any other ordinances or existing codes within our chapter 92, our land use section of our code. That is correct?
No.
Would override the standard?
Override the standards.
Not, it depends on what it is, for example, signage is cross-reference, so it depends on how it's done, in the instance of parking.
Within the redevelopment plan, if it reads wellness center standards, and let's assume that this is a wellness center, because I think that's why we use that language, or my colleagues did, and it says, it shall have a parking standard of four spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area.
Right.
That language versus assuming, let's just assume that that is the standard we apply, that's the one we would be using then?
Yes.
Okay.
Ken, I want to go back to what I was saying before. Can somebody read me the exact language from the central business district redevelopment plan, as amended, which deals with wellness center slash medical offices as it relates specifically to parking?
There's two components, just so you hear the definition first, and then you hear the standards for parking. Under central business district of which we are speaking, an added bullet was, the first one was wellness centers above the first floor, that's the first bullet, the second one was wellness centers, sites, buildings that do not front on South Orange Avenue may have wellness centers on the first floor. This was the office overlay that was approved by the Board of Trustees and the planning board, and specifically number seven is within this office overlay. Next, under wellness center standards, there are three bullet points. First, it shall be a hospital-sponsored center, as is the case with the applicant. Next, it shall not include surgery centers or labs, which is the case with the applicant. Third bullet point, it shall have a parking standard of four spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. That is what both the governing body and the planning board adopted.
The-
However.
No, I'm just trying to understand, what's, this applies to a wellness center? And the definition of wellness center encompasses medical offices specifically?
Yes, I mean, I say that like an adamant yes, because this applicant was the entire genesis for this change.
I'm just saying, is the language specific on that point? I'm not, I'm not asking about what people were thinking, I'm asking what it actually says. I understand what people were thinking, that that's not, that ultimately is not relevant. What's relevant is what actually was put into the law. So I just want, if you tell it is-
I'm searching through the definitions.
Except the application is for physicians' practice.
That's, that's what I'm trying to understand, so, you know, what's, AHA's physicians' practice.
Here we go. Wellness center definition. A hospital-sponsored establishment that provides services, facilities, and education to promote health, healthcare, wellness, fitness, and health maintenance. Such services and facilities include exercise and fitness facilities, fitness training and education, restorative health services, physical speech and occupational therapy, cardiovascular wellness training, and similar facilities and services to enhance health, fitness, wellness, and well-being. Such services, facilities, and education to be provided by professional training, health, nutrition, and medical personnel to the general public, which I would contend this applicant meets that definition.
I, I don't see it that way. I see that's what 11 is, I don't see that's what seven is. Seven is provision, nothing you said in there talks about what they're talking about in number seven.
Very last part, of family medicine, doctors' office.
They're talking about doctors seeing patients, you're talking about, you're talking about a wellness center. They, they even, they even in their, in their presentation tonight have made a clear distinction between 11 being a wellness center and seven being a doctor's office, a doctor's office. So they, so I thought you were saying that there was something in the definition of a wellness center that would include doctor's offices, but I didn't hear it.
Harold, you are speaking my language, this is the same reason I objected before, but this definition was created for medical officers.
So we're, so we're back, so we're back to where, so we're back to where we were before we went on this part of the session.
Just with respect, I didn't hear anything in the definition of a wellness center that said physician.
Right, we're, I agree with you.
It said medical professional.
That's, is a physician not a medical professional?
With respect, I think there's a long list of medical professionals who are not physicians, and my guess is that physicians are physicians, not just medical professionals.
Anyhow.
And it didn't talk about family practice, which by your testimony, this is going to be family practice, physicians' office.
So, but basically, we're back, we're back-
Square one.
Well, I believe, I believe we're back to where we were before, which is a question of whether or not that there is a need for 15 spaces, eight are provided, and now we're back to that spot. And that's fine, we can continue on that basis, I just, you know, we were having a discussion, it sounded like the need might not have been as great, I don't hear that based upon what I've heard as definition, I hear other members of the board, maybe not everyone, but a number of them, maybe a majority, I'm thinking, occurring in that. So, so we're back to where we were, where we were before, which is dealing with the fact that there is a need for 15 spaces where eight are provided. I noticed legal counsel is reading the definition, if you want to advise me otherwise, I'm certainly welcome to, I'm always open to other opinions.
Well, I looked at the ordinance, and there's a definition under the ordinance for professional person, and I just, which includes a physician. I just wanted to see if such a similar phrase was used within the definition of wellness center. And the closest that comes to that is the word professional is used when it describes such services, facilities, and education to be provided by professional training, health, nutrition, and medical personnel, so.
Professional health personnel could be a physician?
It's possible, given the definition, the argument says a professional person includes a physician. You could make the argument that that definition includes physicians, even though it doesn't say the word physician.
I, the intent was not to have traditional medical offices, the intent was to have preventative facilities as we ta, as they talked about on the other side. They made the distinction between wellness and doctor's offices. Now, there can be doctors, there can be doctors within the wellness center, but I don't consider pure doctor's offices, as they defined it in the, in seven, as a, as what is, the intent is a wellness center. That is a different, that's a different animal. In what my understanding is of what a wellness center was intended to be, and again, I think they're saying one side would be a wellness center, but I'm not sure that I-
The reason, let me just, because I agree with Harold, and because I have to keep reiterating as I was the person who objected, is that when this was being discussed, people would say wellness center, and I would say, no, doctor's office, and then be like, no, it's a wellness center. I'm like, no, 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 it's a doctor's office. That's why I'm so keyed into these definitions and parking standards, is because I paid very close attention to how this moved through the entire process. So I feel like, you know, the applicant is probably like, yo, guys, what's going on? We've done this.
So, so healthcare is changing, okay, and I think-
Here's where the pitch for wellness center comes in.
Well, we got definitions here and concepts, okay? You are paid, we are reimbursed now and paid, and we're going to be paid on outcomes, not what you go to the doctor for, we're going to be paid on keeping you healthy. That's where the entire world is going. That's what Medicare is going to reimburse health systems for, population health, it used to be called community health, it used to be clinics, it's population health, people. We have to keep hundreds of thousands of lives healthy from spending unnecessary money on you for letting yourself become diabetic. We have to teach you not to become diabetic, okay? A family practice is really called family medicine nowadays, we're being reimbursed today to keep you healthy, your wellness visit. You can come in right now to any one of our physicians anywhere, and they have to discuss with you 50 items, and they check off the boxes to get reimbursed today, and that is, what are you eating? Have you had exercise? Are you doing this? And as I said in the beginning, if this was all one storefront, we'd be 3,000 square feet in one place doing it all together. It's broken up more so because it's two separate units. But the fact of the matter is, within two to three years, we're not going to be reimbursed because you went in, gave your card, and there was a fee for service, they call that, okay, just like the barber cut your hair. Now, we're going to be like the barber that's going to say to you ahead of time, you're going to need a haircut in a couple of weeks, but if you eat this and do that, you might not need a haircut. And we're going to, you know, so it is an entirety of health and wellness, the day of a medical technologist and a day of a physician office, as you knew it when you were in grammar school up until maybe five years ago even, is changing, you know, I'm sorry.
But one of the questions to pose to you is how you describe it, because this board is only reacting to your description.
And those were the instructions we were given by your zoning officer, we went in on how he read the definitions, and that's how we're here tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Except, if I look at your own, by your own definition, the Center for Wellbeing, which you gave us, it's really nutritional assessments, health assessments, weight management, massage, reflexology, acupuncture, support groups, so forth and so on. It doesn't talk about family medicine, it doesn't talk about an MD being there, it doesn't talk about an MD drawing blood, I-
Right.
I want to try a different-
We're just using what you have as your own definition.
Right, and to get those services, you do need medical providers there, sir.
I don't want to go down the definition of the doctors and medical professionals, let me try it a little differently. Were this board to say that they grant the parking variance but not the specificity of spaces which are individually designated, does that preclude this business from coming into this space and doing business? So are, what we're really arguing about is two things, both the variance and the specificity of the space? So you could say- So you could say we grant a variance. You have to buy X number of parking stickers for the people who work there so they don't vote there, but there is no specificity of the parking space where that variance is granted. Hence, a customer or a person needing some form of medicine slash wellness could come in and park somewhere in those spaces without specificity. They could run their business, and we could meet the needs of the community and the requirements according to the planning board. Is that possible?
Yes, it's possible. Yeah, of course.
We'd be willing...
Dan, I agree with you, but what they're asking for is reserved spaces. And that contradicts what you just said.
My guess is the applicant would probably give up the required spaces in a heartbeat. If that was going to get them the approval they need.
Look, we're a downtown location. I got to be honest with you. If there's a space out front at the meter, they're going to park at the meter space out front. They're not going to go crazy into the garage to walk around the building the way this building is set up.
And I will add to that during the discussions that I continue to fight. The idea of the number of people who live in South Orange, who would already... We'd already welcome them to park and shop and do whatever they want and be able to walk over to the building. The strategic location of it being very close to a lot of our senior facilities, all these kind of played a role in people buying into, precluding myself, Medtail and what is being proposed as a wellness center and complementing all the other retail uses. And the reason that I believe it was granted was the side street, was the notion that it's not a great space for traditional retail. So it would be a service space. It would be a wellness center. It would be Medtail, and it would help support all the other existing businesses. So I think that, with my colleague on the planning board had just alluded to, would probably make a lot of sense. Again, I'm not going to be voting on this. I did not see the last video. So maybe some of this stuff was covered, but I just got my packet.
We had a lot of testimony, a lot of different boards, a lot of different hearings, and we presented where, you know, Medtail, as village president is saying, and congratulations, is retail. It's what's going into shopping malls to drive traffic. Amazon and their drones are killing the shopping malls. They're going to kill your downtown. And we are... You can't get a lot of stuff on Amazon that we do, and we bring people back downtown.
So... So we have... We have... I'm going back to the planner summary of the parking availability based upon previous approvals granted by this board. There are 12 shared residential and retail spaces, and there are 18 spaces open to the project and general public with a two-hour parking limit. Just, by the way, as a question I've been meaning to ask, is there a reason why the 18 spaces could not be used by those who are going to take advantage of the... So really, there are 30 spaces that are not designated for any particular use. So whether or not we're stuck on, you know, 22 spaces, meaning 15 for the 7 Vos Avenue and 7 for 11, just for a moment, to assume that we know what's going there. If we had 30 spaces to play with, we'd generally be fine, even still recognizing the, you know, significant use for the space. So my... I guess, I just want to clarify. I want to go back to something that was said earlier. The zoning officials... Our zoning official said a variance was required. But Susan, you are suggesting that a variance perhaps is not required, and what's required is some sort of amendment to the plan. I'm wondering whether or not either of those are really required and whether or not it's just specifically site plan approval is required, acknowledging that there are spaces. And we can do it with certain conditions, the conditions that I heard being relating to signage and relating to the purchase of permits for employees, which would help to diminish the need for that parking. But I'm trying to understand...
The 18 spaces in question are, I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'll remember, but I think the 18 spaces imply, forgetting those 12, which are exclusive for the building, and I think the 18 were also for use of other buildings in that area.
No, it says it's open for the... But there's no reason why they could not use it.
No, they could be used for the doctors, too, but you can't make those reserved spaces, though.
I understand. Let's assume for a moment we take reserved spaces off the whole thing altogether.
And made all 30 of them open, which is what they suggested last...
Sure, Mike.
Why do you need reserved spaces at all?
That's correct.
But I would say...
Why are they get the five employee permits?
Right.
We'll make it subject to the five employee permits. We have no problem with that, and we'll leave them all on reserve. That's what we originally came in with on reserves.
Yes.
The only reason that I had said that there may need be a need for a modification of their approval was if the board was, as they were asking, that it be reserved. So if it was, if the board was considering what their request was, they would have needed a amendment to their site plan approval.
Is the applicant willing to... Forget about how long it's taken us to get to this point, which we could have gotten to a lot earlier. Let's just assume for a moment. Let's assume, just for a moment. Would the applicant be open to not reserving any spaces specifically for the medically used for either 7 or 11 Vos Avenue, even though I recognize this application is only for 7 Vos Avenue? Would you be open to that and additionally purchasing five permits?
For the employees.
For employees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So any other questions from the members of the board?
Well, I think we should say as many permits as there are employees.
As there are employees, right.
Right. I actually wasn't proposing a motion because we're not done yet.
Okay.
But I was just...
They could have 11 employees, not any more than five at any one time. So as long as every employee has a parking permit, which will accrue additional revenue to our community, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I actually think the 30 spaces not being reserved is actually better for all the tenants involved, because it also takes away the problem with when you are weekends, when the doctors weren't there, and having those reserved spaces and trying to figure out if people are going to above or go to traffic or park here.
Yeah. Okay. So any other questions? I agree. Any other members of the board have a question or a comment? Okay.
Just one other comment.
Yes.
If you're going to do that, then let's make sure the signs that are there illegally should come down.
Well, let's... Absolutely.
Go take them down tonight.
Does the applicant have any objections to that?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So are there any other questions or comments from the members of this board?
Well, instead of taking signs down, probably the two-hour parking?
One... I have a suggestion that we'll get to the specific discussion of it. I'm just... Want to try to complete the actual hearing. I have to do that. So that's why I'm asking. Do we have any other questions for this witness? Okay. Now, it's open to the general public. Does anybody have any questions for this witness? Hearing none. Is there any... Do you have any other witnesses, counsel?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So at this point, the hearing is now closed, and we'll move...
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a public comment at this point as opposed to questions for specific witnesses? Hearing seeing none. I will now say that, well, ask again. You have nobody else to provide. We're done. Okay. So now we're moving on to discussion. So I think we're pretty much there from the discussion I've heard. If somebody would like to take a crack at offering a motion, I would be happy to entertain it at this time. You're going to make me do it, aren't you? All right.
I wasn't present for the previous discussion, nor did I watch the video, so I don't think I may make the motion.
Yes. I would like it if you would take a crack.
I move that applicant be approved for at least number seven, because that's what's on our agenda, provided, A, the applicant deletes the requirement for reserved parking, B, the applicant purchases enough permits at any time required by the number of employees that it has or is expected to have.
Terry.
Well, wasn't there anything else relating to signage that you wish to...
Well, certainly the signage be policed, and whatever signs that are up there presently that are not legit or legal based on our previous approvals be removed, and that the signs that, however, that limit the parking to two hours, I believe, remain intact.
Actually, change them to a two-hour parking, which is different than what they have now.
Okay.
What do they have right now?
It's reserved for...
Adam, I don't think they can hear you.
Currently, I think it says it's reserved for 7 and 11.
Right. As part of this motion, he's saying they're all shared spaces. You're saying all shared spaces, you want a two-hour time limit sign up.
I think the other sign is two-hour parking.
We agree.
There is one that's marked two-hour parking.
Right. There's a few that are two-hour parking.
That's correct.
I agree.
Okay.
Is two hours sufficient for the normal visit?
It better be, or they're going to need more seats.
The shopping, the Medtail experience, two hours is good?
For our use, two hours is good. If they go to dinner for four hours, I can't help you. I apologize.
There is a motion on the table.
Hold on, just before we get in... Well...
Is there a second?
Yeah, is there a se... Hey, it's my role. I'm just kidding. Is there a second? Marks, okay. So Mr. Rosner, seconds.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, the current standard on the old resolution was that the 30 spaces which are not allocated at the supermarket on this level, 12 shared for residential and retail, and 18 spaces which are open for use by both the project and the general public with a two-hour parking limit. So which of those spaces will have the two-hour parking limit?
All 30.
All 30.
All.
Okay. Okay. There is a motion. There is a second. Any other discussion? No? Jeta, will you take the call the role, please?
Mr. Lerner?
Yes.
Mr. Coltmax?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, may I ask that the applicant submit a revised plan reflecting these... Including the conditions on the plan?
Okay. Thank you very much. Best of luck to you with your project. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Moving on. Application to be heard, case number 241. Keystone Properties LLC, block 2003, lot 1, 184 Valley Street, preliminary and final site plan. Applicant is proposing to construct a three-story building. As it's noted on the written agenda, the applicant did request that this matter be carried to the July 6 meeting. We were inclined to grant that request. I'm hoping that's okay. So is further noticing required then? Okay. So this matter is carried over. Then we are moving on to discussions. Report from the Board of Trustees members regarding the Planning and Zoning Committee. Trustee Rosner, do you have anything you'd like to...
By the way, our official planning and zoning committee meetings come in this next Tuesday. We did meet last week more as a recap, but I know trustee Calm's going to be talking about one of the issues. So his president Calm, I'm sorry.
President, right.
Or demotion, depending on how you look at it. And I think nothing else really has to be discussed for this.
Okay. Is there... I mean, the village president, I would be happy to have the village president. I think we all would, to update us on various things that may be going on that may eventually come to this planning board. Is there any reason why we can't... I mean, whether it's on the agenda or not, or for any other reason? Is there any reason? Okay. So...
Yeah, I spoke to the chairman earlier today, and I would certainly like to keep the communication open. And I feel that sometimes there have been substantial gaps between the administration and making sure that the planning board understands what's coming down. Even if it's a report I give in January, and you see an applicant in March, you at least know that something was in the works. So the one thing we've been discussing, especially with the introduction of the budget, and as you probably saw from the campaign, the amount of development, concerns from people, redevelopment studies, rehabilitation, we are kind of at that critical point where we need more planning services. And so the Board of Trustees is considering either bringing somebody full-time in-house to work with us using consulting services, but broadening the scope of what we're getting right now. And of course, Ms. Gruhl would be welcome to apply. I'm saying in general terms that we need to increase our planning services to the municipality. The planning board is able to obviously keep whatever professionals that you want. We still have to discuss this within the context of the entire budget, but we do know that there is big interest in actually getting this master plan up and running. I apologize. We haven't been able to do that. I think I apologize on behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, but we're getting hit with so much stuff, and our bandwidth is so limited right now that really our administrator ends up doing a significant amount of land use work in conjunction with our professionals, our zoning officer, and we're kind of just getting to that point where it's too much. And it would be better for us to bring in somebody who has one or two days in the office. Maybe it's somebody who's on staff. Maybe it's consulting services. Maybe it's, you know, Ms. Gruhl's firm. In a larger capacity, we're open to everything. But the board has talked about wanting to include a larger budget line item for the next, at least foreseeable future, one to two years, to make sure that we can get through all of these things, because the last thing we want to do is be making ad hoc decisions based on applications and people's interest in wanting to be a part of this revitalization without having all of our planning documents in order. And as you've probably seen from our master plan, our reexamine reports, our elements, the requested elements, there's just a lot. And so wanted to share it with the planning board, get your feedback on it. Obviously, nothing's being done yet until we talk about this item in the context of our overall budget. And then we'd obviously want to consult with you, and either you could be a part of whether we do an RFP or not, or you obviously can engage whatever professionals you want.
If you're talking about... Thank you very much for that. We really do appreciate your coming and talking to us about this. I'm just sort of curious. When you talk about it in the context of the budget, the budget is a calendar year budget. Does that mean that what you're talking about is something that would not be implemented until calendar year 2016? Or is this something that you think would be implemented at some point during the current year?
Current year. It could be. 16. I mean, we haven't even introduced a first reading of the budget yet, so there's ways that we adjust it to have this bizarre scenario where calendar...
Municipal budgets are always done sort of in the middle of the year, so you're covering the calendar year, and you have to always allow... So when we make cuts, we know they usually don't take place for half a year. And the same thing when we add something to the budget, but they'll be for this, at least for the second half of this year.
And from the feedback that we got from the master plan subcommittee from the planning board was there was a lot of good takeaways of the need for the visioning, again, really engaging the public, since it's been a long time. Some of the elements haven't been discussed in a long time. And originally, the Board of Trustees had appropriated or estimated $50,000 or $60,000 to do the comprehensive master plan. I thought that was incredibly, incredibly low from, you know, what I think we want and what the planning board members had suggested be a part of this process and the standards and the research. And we just have so many planning documents out there. My estimate to the Planning and Zoning Committee was I would think a little bit more along the 120, 130 range would be something. But more importantly, having an individual who is helping drive, one that we can hold accountable. We create committees all the time, but it'd be good to actually have a professional, whether it's our existing planner or somebody else or a partnership, who knows how that actually works, but having somebody who is accountable to actually drive that process forward and that this master plan doesn't become, you know, it... Right now, it's been, if something more important comes up, the master plan drops down, when really the master plan should be the single most important thing that we should be doing. But with the limited bandwidth and capacity right now, it's becoming very challenging.
So I surmise you will... I'm asking for Niels, who's not here tonight, who's been bugging me as to what the status is. So that means we're literally going to hold off on an RFP until, A, you've made a decision whether to 1099 a person?
Or whatever format it takes.
And at that point, then you will make the decision whether we have to go out for an RFP or not.
What we anticipated in planning and zoning is that we would like to post the RFP for the master plan by sometime in the fall. So it would happen this year. We would do an RFP for these services. I would say that the board has to do an RFP, even though the planning board doesn't, because we have an ordinance on the books that when we anticipate professional services, et cetera, being X number of dollars or more, we do it as an RFP. We would need to do that first. Obviously... Obviously, select whomever, whatever firm that, that, you know, a steering committee chooses, make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, approve it, and then one of the first items on the to-do list is master plan.
Okay.
And I'm going to do my best as the village president to try and get all of that smushed into the budget. Yes.
My only comment would be that I think your 125 is low by, by 50%. I think it's probably closer if we're going to be, if the trustees want to do this seriously, comprehensively, and with some alacrity, my guess is the figure is closer to $250,000.
The only thing I would say to that, Dan, is that some of the elements have been done. So, but you're right, it may be more, it may be less, but it, but some of the elements have been done already, or only need to be slightly modified, so.
The reason I didn't go that high, and I know some master plans actually do, and there's also granting agencies, and I'm hoping, praying that we can get one of those grants, because especially as a smart growth TOD, we're developing, we're doing all the right things that would, we'd be looked upon favorably for like an NJTPA grant or something. The reason I didn't go as high as you did is because the vision plan is still fully relevant. Just in 2009, even though it was never formally integrated into the master plan adopted in any form, is that a lot of that can, you know, it went through the charrettes, the public forums, so a lot of stuff with the CBD can be moved into there. I, I think it's more the housing element, some of the, there's a request for historic preservation element, a sustainability element, and just getting everything into one single document, so we don't have like 30 floating around. So I'm going to keep my fingers crossed, though, that it's not that high. Let's pretend that was never set into the record. We don't like $250,000 bills.
By the way, if it's done to come out that way, maybe, maybe we'll split it over two years to the cost.
Yeah.
So if it was 120 this year, it would be another 120.
I agree with Dan. I think it's going to be higher.
Take, it's just, I think, the overall necessity of, because once it's done and it's what, done right, and it's integrated properly-
I agree with Dan.
-and all the plans mesh, and you have what you need as, as a going-forward document for 10 years, the investment over time is worth whatever, what that kind of money costs initially.
If done right, it should be more than 10 years, if it don't.
What were you saying?
I'm at a stage where 10 years is a great period of time.
Were there, were there any other, Sheena, were there any other parts, anything else you wanted to talk about in terms of items that you're working on that you've-
You are, I, I will apologize, because the past two weeks have been me getting caught up to speed on all the projects, meeting all the kind of folks involved with the project, so this is still in my introduction phase. You will definitely have a more substantial report at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So then, final item on our agenda. Again, thank you, Sheena, for that, for the report, and Mark for the report. We have a report from our board planner regarding Irvington Avenue redevelopment study.
It's, it's my understanding, but I don't know whether in fact this will happen, that there may be a modification in the study area. And if so, then obviously this board would get whatever modified resolution would occur. At this point in time, my understanding is, is that there has been no formal modification. So we're at, on hold right now, I guess.
Okay. Is, is it possible that the modification is going, is the modification that is being contemplated one which would add any new areas, or merely subtract from the areas that are, that were contemplated previously? Do you know?
It's my understanding that it would contract.
So if that's the case, given the research and the work that you've done to date, let's assume for a moment that, you know, of the, I remember, nine areas, seven areas, whatever there were, there are now three, or whatever the number is. You have been collecting information, but I know it sounded like, if I remember correctly, there was some information you had yet to receive. If you were told the day after tomorrow that these are the particular areas, could you complete your work, or is there stuff that you're still waiting on?
No, we can complete the work relatively quickly.